All right, let's get started. Today is Tuesday, September 3rd. We are back to our regular Tuesday meetings. This is a regular meeting of the City Council. Notice is hereby given to members of the City Council and the general public that at this regular meeting, the City Council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can I have a roll call? Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Asland?
Present.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Sweet?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my honor, please stand if you're able.
And Vice Mayor, our mission statement?
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
And Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, water mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our open call to the public. This enables the public to address the council about an item that is not on the prepared agenda. Comments related to items that are on the agenda come at the time that that agenda item is discussed. Open call to the public appears on the agenda twice, once in the beginning, once in the end. You have three minutes. There is a clock right here, a timer, and this is not a time for the City Council to discuss items with you, or ask you questions, or have you ask us questions, but just a time for you to share some thoughts with the council. First up, we have Dennis Givens.
All right, thanks a lot. Welcome back, everyone. My name is Dennis Givens, of the South Side. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council, City Staff, the citizens. Happy Health Awareness Day. I'm Dennis Givens, the Korean Teddy Roosevelt, and I just came here to talk about how we should help fund cats. I noticed that they didn't get their place on Cedar, and both their buses are down, so I believe it's really important to help them out, because I know that they didn't get their grant last time they asked for one, so it would be really awesome to help them out and our relatives on the streets. And I think it's important to build a bridge between cops and the street people, because not all cops are bad and not all street people are bad, so let's help each other out and work together to form a great community. There's also a flag bridges at the Murdoch Center that's been going on Saturdays, 9:00 AM till when the food is gone. If you guys have food securities, please check them out. It's a really good way to feed yourself in the community. And just letting everyone know that City Council's supposed to be nonpartisan position, and moderation is key, so remember that when going forth. And also, it's okay to be proud to be an American. I know that a lot of signs are out there now, and I noticed that none of them are red, white, and blue, so it's okay to be an American. I know that we've done some things bad, but we've also done a lot of great things in the world, so just remember, you guys are really great people, and always remember that. Oh, good job, Miranda, on your City Council run. I see you everywhere, but make sure you step it up, because I heard that Asian guy running for City Council is right on your tail, and yeah, I heard he always wanted to be Vice Mayor, so keep up the good work and keep going. And I noticed that lady that comes in here, Dr. Davos, maybe? Let's just make sure we check on her. I don't know, she seems like she's going through a lot, and let's just remind each other to be better men out there, because we're better men than people like Hamas and stuff like that, so just be better men out there. And, hmm, yeah. I sent out Facebook requests for everyone, and I noticed only three of you guys accepted my request, so I'm just a citizen trying to do my part, so let's be friends, and let's build back better and keep America great. Thank you. Let's go us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, moving down to item number five, Council Liaison Reports. Councilmember House, are you feeling up to giving us a report?
I do not have anything to report this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try and make this short. I was busy over the break, and I broke it down to the different departments that I was involved with. So with water, I did attend a couple of Water Commission meetings. I did the Nanwa meeting, and we did the BioSolids Treatment Pilot Project out at Wildcat. It was fascinating to go out there and see what that's all about. I attended the Water Reuse Conference and the Water Symposium. With transportation, Mountain Line and Metro Plan did take a break with us, but I did want to thank Mountain Line for the free rides to the fair. That was fun. And Metro Plan has a partnership with the city with the Pedestrian Advisory Committee reestablishing the Flagstaff Walks Event, happening September 30th, and I'll give more information as soon as I have that available. For BPAC, I did attend their meetings, and the Aspen Niche Project is slated to begin September 23rd. Excited about that. And NACOG, it was a great meeting. I keep hearing how Head Start is struggling, and I'm not quite sure how to help. I keep talking to Chris Fetzer about it, and just, they're having a rough time getting staff, so that is what I did. Thanks.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing since my report of last week.
Vice Mayor?
As most of you know, and everybody out there in the world knows, many on council attended the League of Cities of Towns Conference this past week at the Arizona-Beltmore. That took up the great bandwidth of my time. I missed a rescheduled Tourism Commission meeting and haven't had a chance to loop back on that yet. That's all I have.
Councilmember Harris?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. I too did the BioSolids Tour. That was really fascinating. It's really encouraging to see alternatives to dealing with our wastewater and solid waste. As the Vice Mayor mentioned, the League's conference, Annual Conference, was last week. It was, it's so informative to go there and go to the different sessions and hear about, hear from other cities and towns and other professionals, how they're solving the problems that we all face, whether it's housing, the unsheltered, how we can help them, the economic development, so it's always very valuable to go, and I was really appreciative to be there, so that's all I have.
And nothing from me. So we move down to appointments. We have some appointments to the Sustainability Commission, and we have two councilmembers making appointments. First up is Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to circle back really quick, because I forgot to mention during the liaison reports, I wanted to note, kudos for the team members from Team Flagstaff who presented during the League Conference. It was great to see so many of our team members up on those stages, whether they were presenting or facilitating or otherwise engaging. As far as the Sustainability Commission goes, this was a good round of applicants. There were a couple applications that really stood out, and for me, it came down to a decision between either appointing a lot of experience on city commissions or inviting new voices to the table. I am going with the latter and would like to move to appoint Cameron Dakota Carlson to a seat for a term expiring February 2027.
Thank you. Do we have a second? I'll second.
I'll second that, or Miranda will.
Thank you. And any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, next we have Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I would like to nominate Elijah Bourne for appointment expiring February 2027.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? All right. Let me get back to that agenda item, and then down. Okay, Consent Agenda. All matters under the Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine unless a member of the City Council expresses a desire at the meeting to remove an item from the Consent Agenda for discussion. It will be enacted by one motion approving the recommendation. Unless otherwise noted, expenditures approved by the council are budgeted items. So I know that we have a couple of councilmembers who would like to pull an item. Councilmember Harris, do you want to tell us which item that you would like to pull?
Yes, Item C is in cat.
And Councilmember Sweet?
Item A, please.
A. Okay. Anyone else? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of Items C and A.
So moved.
Any discussion? I mean, a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, is Pearl's here? Yeah, there you are. Yeah, yeah, there you are. My questions are for Pearl's. So we're getting this electric, all-electric Zamboni. I lived in Wisconsin, and so we play hockey outside, so we don't have a whole bunch of issues, but whatever. So talk to me about this all-electric Zamboni. So here's my question. When it goes down, how, what's the, what's the, what's the process? I mean, do we have a plan in place? Do we, are we going to be able to have somebody come up and fix it? Because it's probably not something you can take somewhere. They've probably got to come up and fix it. When it goes down, do, are we going to keep the old one? Is it possible to have it ready to go to help? Because a lot of people use the ice, right? So those are all the kind of questions that I've got in regards to the maintenance, the upkeep, the operation of the piece of equipment. And I'm assuming, I'm assuming, and you know what happens when we assume, but I'm assuming that we did our research, and we looked at the performance of this type of machine, vehicle, whatever it is, right? So go ahead, start there.
I'll jump in. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Good afternoon, everybody. Amy Hagan, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. Excellent questions. So at Jay Lively Activity Center, at the ice rink, there are two Zambonis today. There's our old one from 1996, that's our backup, and there's the current one that gets more of the daily usage, that's from 2014. And it is daily usage, just as you alluded to, Councilmember Harris. Gosh, the ice resurfacing occurs at least seven to eight times a day, if not more, depending on the programming. So they're both propane, that is the fuel type for both of those. So with this purchase of a fully-electric Zamboni, the 1996 unfortunately goes to the pasture, and I'm not sure if they can use an ice resurfer in the pasture, but that will go away, and the 2014 becomes our backup. So still propane, so we'll still keep the propane tank there, and we'll still fill it when needed. So the electric one became, becomes the primary, propane as the backup. We'll see also what the cost savings will be per year on propane. We spend quite a bit on propane there at the, at the ice rink, so there are some future cost savings with this change. We also installed a 50-amp circuit and charger, if you will, for the Zamboni, given that it gets that much usage. And yes, did our research, and we're not going to be the first electric Zamboni in the state of Arizona. Bummer, but we're going to be one of the first few. So we've talked with manufacturers about it, we've talked with fellow ice rinks about it, including outside of the state of Arizona, and did our research and are really looking forward to having a specialty piece of fleet like this, and to be able to go electrified is unique, and we feel real fortunate for this opportunity.
Thank you. Those are great answers to my questions.
Okay, Councilmember Sweet, do you want to tell us about Item A?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a chance to talk with Christine and emailed her my questions, but I thought for the public, I'd ask them and have her give the answers. My first one, and this may seem silly, but I did ask another person who read the agenda packet, and they also were a little confused, so I thought it was worth asking. The amount that we're requesting tonight, is that something that we have already agreed to, or is this an increase to the budget?
This is Councilmember Sweet, Christine Cameron, project manager with Capital Improvements. This is not something that we've agreed to outside of a council process, this is a regular contract that we are bringing to you. It's a GMP, and it's Amendment Number Four, after the design amendments have already been executed, and so it hasn't been agreed to yet. We are over budget on the corridor portion of the project. So I think those were the two components of your question.
Thank you. My second question, in the packet, it states the Lone Tree Quarter Project is projected to be over budget, and it talks about reallocating some funding from Proposition 419. Can you talk a little bit about what that looks like, and will we be making that up somewhere else down the road? So thank you.
Sure. So the projected growth from the tax revenues that fund the transportation program are looking healthy, and so we're hoping that there is some area there to kind of make up the shortfall. We've also received $2.5 million in Arizona Smart Funds for the Butler Complete Streets Project out of 419, so that can be reallocated. And we're also hopefully anticipating, we have a raised grant application in for Butler and Fort, and so we're looking at the future transportation tax, we're looking at areas within the 419 that we can save some money now, and hopefully, that doesn't mean that any projects will fall off the list going forward, but if that happens, council will be notified of that, usually during our budget retreats or in the annual, like, capital program updates that we give you. We cover those items for your input.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
All right, so do I have a motion on Item 7C?
I'll move to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. And a motion on 7A?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item 8A, under our regular agenda, consideration and approval of contract. Hello, CJ?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. CJ Perry, your IT Director, coming before you with a design-build contract for bringing fiber to Flagstaff. So first, I want to kind of go over a little bit of just kind of the history of our journey for our fiber projects. It all started back around in 2017 with a fiber project to connect the traffic signals down Butler. Jeff Bowman was in his team, were the originator of the project that would ultimately kick-start our whole Fiber Master Plan. Then in 2018, I started to get staff from across the various divisions to begin creating the Fiber Master Plan. What we began to realize is for advanced traffic signal management, we needed communications with each of our traffic signals to coordinate timings. For our water systems, we needed communication between our water pumps, our water plants, and all of our water infrastructure to kind of coordinate that. For our facilities, we needed communication for things like Wi-Fi for staff and some of our smart facilities systems, like our HVAC equipment and some of the new smart lighting things that were starting to come out. Then there was other cutting-edge smart city technology that's just kind of starting to come about. All of that needs communication and coordination as well. We were using microwave links as well as cellular links for this in the past, and while it was working, some of the speeds were not quite what we needed for some of the more demanding use cases, as well as when our fun weather that we get in the winter, sometimes those links would go down. So we started to build a master plan, and this map that you kind of see on the screen here was kind of the start of that master plan, with a focus to build fiber routes along our city infrastructure. Additionally, we realized that building this would allow us to use our infrastructure to help bring better broadband to our community. If we built this network, we could use some of the conduit to make it easier for additional ISPs to come to Flagstaff. They could utilize our conduit to make their builds cheaper and easier for us. We were dealing with slower speeds and higher prices than many other cities throughout the country, so this could be a way to solve that issue. We actually created a community broadband team that consisted of Coconino County, NAU, FUSD, CCC, even farther ways as the city of Page, to work on the broadband problem across northern Arizona. We used this plan as an input for our capital projects. If the ground is already open, it's much cheaper and easier to just put a pipe in there while it's open than start from scratch and worry about minimizing the damage to our existing roads and other infrastructure. This was going to be a 20-year plan to build this out, and we had a long road ahead, but it was exciting to see so much momentum early on. The next few years were a bit of a whirlwind for us. The state of Arizona had begun working on a similar master plan that brought fiber from Phoenix to Flagstaff, with the intentions of, in the future, of going to California as well as New Mexico. Then COVID hit, and all of our plans went out the window. COVID highlighted the need for quality broadband throughout our community. This was most evident when we had people in our parking lots using our Wi-Fi to be able to do their homework. We started getting a lot of funds for fiber. City Council allocated some ARPA funds, then eventually some more general fund, as well as some grant opportunities that we took throughout the next couple of years. We started working on several fiber projects, and our infrastructure slowly but surely began to grow. Council also added this to your legislative priorities to try to promote broadband in northern Arizona. In the latest funding excitement, the federal government introduced the Federal Infrastructure Investments and Jobs Act. This was designed to bring broadband to rural parts of America. We continued to work with our community partners on how we could advocate for northern Arizona for a lot of these funds. One of the rules around this funding is that they would go to an existing ISP. They weren't planning on funding city projects unless that city had already been an ISP, and we weren't interested in becoming an ISP. So we pivoted. Last year, we decided to go all-in on our strategy to bring additional broadband competition to Flagstaff. We released an RSOQ in order to meet the needs of the community for cheaper, faster, and better broadband, while also working to finish the city infrastructure project so we could work on our smart city initiatives. The idea was to let the ISP have access to our existing conduits throughout the city in order to also build the community. In exchange, while they were building the community, they would put in extra fiber and conduit for the city, for us to finish our build for our smart city initiatives. It's really kind of a win-win in the private-public partnership situation. We had multiple submissions, and we had evaluators from several city divisions, as well as some of those community partners that I mentioned earlier. In the end, we selected WECOM for their submission. They are planning on building the community and the city network. With me today is Paul Fleming, the CEO of WECOM. I'm going to turn it over to him to tell a little bit about their company and their plans for Flagstaff.
Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate you letting me come and talk to everyone, and we're very excited about being able to work with Flagstaff. I won't take up much time, but I did want to give a little history of WECOM, and then kind of how these two projects align and how they'll all kind of come together, hopefully quickly. Let's see, if we can go ahead and go to the next slide. Oh, apparently I have to do it myself, sorry. I should have known. So I'll take just a couple minutes to introduce WECOM. There's a, although we have been in business for 68 years, there's a lot of people who are not familiar with our company. So we kind of take a five-step approach in how we're solving the problem of broadband or the digital divide throughout Arizona. And of course, this has evolved over the last 68 years, but what we've been doing lately is taking these five steps and applying them to everything we've done, and we found that it's been a very successful model, and it's really been able to build the fiber network and capacity in the cities and towns that we're working in, and give them that telecommunications and that future-proof network that they really need and deserve. It shouldn't matter where you live at in the state, to be able to get good telecommunications, get good internet access, and be able to achieve everything online that every citizen deserves. So we take a fiber-first approach. So everything we build, we look at it from a fiber standpoint. We want to build the next generation, high-capacity network that will last for the next 100 or 200 years. So we look at everything, and we say we want to build a fiber-first network. We want to do it with a partnership orientation. We want to partner with the city or the town, with the county, with the local electric companies, water companies, and other providers that are there. Our goal isn't to come in and make a mess, but rather have a partnership that allows us to get the network to those who need it as quickly as possible. And so we look at a partnership orientation every time. We look at a whole, an outside-in approach, and what that really means is, in a lot of denser areas, you have providers who have created networks that are, that are successful. What we're looking to do is create and fill in the gaps where people don't have good service. Maybe you have a provider, maybe you have two providers, but the service isn't great. We want to build areas where people need the service. We don't want to overbuild someone. If you take it, certain cities in Arizona, for example, they have five different or six different providers in that area. The goal is to bring in first-class service in the areas that need it. We're extremely community-focused, and what I mean by that is, every community we go into, we, we open an office there, we hire locally within that community, we partner with the community colleges and do fiber training, we fund that fiber training, and we create internships for those, and we do everything we can to put back into the community, whether it be, like I mentioned, hiring and/or giving to the local baseball teams, the rodeos, the Coconino County Fair we just did, and so forth. And so we're always trying to give back to the community and keep that focus there. We're an Arizona-based company. We were created in Arizona, in the Kingman area, and we've continued to grow throughout Arizona for our entire, the last seven decades, basically. And one thing we bring to the table is that we're fully funded. For just the products that I'm talking about, not anything beyond that, we've set aside $300 million in private capital to help fund and/or match, in a lot of cases, the bills that we're doing. Some of them are partially funded via, like, the USDA and/or the Arizona Broadband Development Grant or Future Coming Bead, but what's really important is that we have the capital to match that across the board. And this $300 million that we've brought forth is just for Arizona, so we're not spreading it across six or seven states, but we've put it for Arizona alone. So if we look at our company, as I mentioned, you know, we were founded in 1956. Original name was Western Electronics and Communications. 1980, we changed our name to WECOM and been WECOM ever since. We've always served the northwest Arizona market. We've expanded out into that. We do have some stuff in Nevada, but the northwest Arizona was our primary focus, and then we've continued to go east across Arizona, all the way up into the Navajo Nation, and then down to the Phoenix area and south of Phoenix. And 2020, we did win $3.2 million from the USDA, and we put in about $1 million, and that was to build fiber to the Wallaby Tribe. The Wallaby Tribe has never had good telecommunications, and so now we are just finishing 100-mile fiber build to them, connecting all their municipal buildings, all their businesses... fiber build to them, connecting all their municipal buildings, all their businesses in the Peach Springs area, and then we'll be building fiber to all the homes within the Peach Springs and the Wallapie Tribe area next. We did win $10 million from Arizona, which is a $45 million build, which we're building all under and unserved households in Mojave and La Paz County. We did win also a $21 million, it's a $21 million project. It's an $8.1 million grant in Yavapai County, helping to build 6,500 homes throughout Yavapai County that are all under and underserved. And then, we did win the Coconino County RFP recently to work with Coconino County to start to build fiber across all of Coconino County. This is just kind of a quick thing. When the, in the Mojave County area, we started off building out the airport, and then we started building the rest of the residence, and we were able to have the governor come back and do a celebratory ribbon-cutting, kind of helping kick that project off for both Wallapie Tribe and the Mojave County and La Paz builds. We also built a similar network in, down in Superior, which was focused on connecting the municipal buildings, similar to what we were doing, what we've been discussing in the RSOQ with Flagstaff, which was connecting your fire stations, the revitalization center, the libraries, Chamber of Commerce, and so forth. And it connected all their major, Superior town buildings and municipal buildings that they needed, and we finished and kicked that off a few months back. Moving forward to the Flagstaff portion, so there's two sections of the Flagstaff build. One is what CJ was talking about, which is the municipal build, and that's connecting, I believe it's initially 34 different city buildings together on a fiber network that the city owns and operates, and they're able to really kind of advance that telecommunications. The second section is the greater Flagstaff area. So, the second thing we're doing is, we're going to build fiber across all of Flagstaff. So, we have right now in our initial plan, more than 1 million feet of fiber that we'll be building, and this is for residents, small-to-medium businesses, you know, enterprise customers, commercial, and so forth, so that they can have a truly redundant, high-speed, next-generation fiber connectivity to every single home going forward. So, in Flagstaff, there will be no digital divide, there'll be no lack of telecommunications, everybody will have it. So, this is our Phase 1, which is the million feet of fiber, more than 72,000 residents, and 95% city coverage. Phase 2 comes with the next BEAD program coming out this fall, and we each looked to cover everything that we didn't finish in the Phase 1 build. This is completely funded by us, so we're, there's no grant money and/or city funds going into this Phase 1 that you see on the screen. This is a fully funded by WECOM build throughout Flagstaff to be able to build that affordable broadband access throughout the entire city. Just wanted to show a couple of the initial build maps. We have kind of what's in and outside of the city of Flagstaff, city limits, just for our initial Phase 1, I was just talking about that we're funding. I don't have a lot of great creative things to say about the maps. I think they kind of speak for themselves, so. The last thing I would like to say, you know, was WECOM, one of the things we focus on is having an affordable telecommunications plan or affordable broadband fiber internet plan for everyone. So, we do every, we participate in every program, whether it be the ACP that recently lapsed, to E-rate programs, to our own designs on affordability, because it's not just a matter of building it and bringing it to the residents, but it has to be a program that's affordable for them to have. So, we have multiple tiers of speeds, we have multiple affordability programs, and we also bring into every community what we call the digital navigators. And so, digital navigators are just a free service we have in which different, we have them in the city themselves, and then we have on the call center where you can call just to get help. So, if someone lives in a more rural location, and maybe it's the first time they're ever getting the internet, they're a little scared of it, they want to talk to someone about cybersecurity, about protecting themselves online, how do they connect with their grandchildren for a Facebook, you know, video call? They're just an asset that we bring and say, "It's a resource to help anybody out, to help calm any fears you have and/or to help get you connected," and these are the digital navigators. And so, we try to make this an affordable program that also is extremely accessible across the board. That's where we're at. I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add to that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm happy to ask. Thank you again for having me. I really appreciate it, and we're very excited about being able to do this with everyone.
Thanks, Paul. So, yeah, just as far as this goes.
CJ?
Yep.
Pardon me.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Matthews has a question.
Quick question. The slide before you wrapped it up where you were showing that boring coverage, yes?
Yes.
So, I see that Coconino Community College, that area is not covered. Is there a reason for that?
So, this is, Coconino Community College is covered. This is just a very rough drawing of the map, so. And there is some areas you'll find that maybe are not particularly covered, and this one that are in the second phase of the build. So, the Phase 1 and Phase 2 are 100% coverage.
Okay, okay. Just curious why we weren't covering.
Yeah, the rudimentary drawings kind of show that it doesn't cover that, but the Coconino County Community College is part of our build.
Okay.
I don't know if they'll buy the service or not, but they'll be included in what we're constructing, so.
And just to let you know, I see at the bottom it says strictly confidential, and it's not anymore.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Vice Mayor has a question.
We can all dream, right?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. Thanks for being here and coming out in person with us today. I, I'm just curious, and there's no right or wrong answer to this, but you got me thinking about your operations out in Peach Springs. What level of disturbance does that cause when you're connecting to someplace that's very rural, when you're going through different kinds of land management regimes? Can you talk to me about that for a minute?
So, I assume you're talking about physical disturbance?
Yes. In terms of laying down the fiber, right?
So, there are a number of different construction methods that we use. One is your standard aerial, which is, in that case, we'd be hooking up to an electrical pole, which, you know, in your area, it's APS, and generally speaking, there's not a lot of aerial within the city of Flagstaff. There is some, it's about 20%, but the remainder is buried. And so, when it comes to buried, you have a handful of methods. One, which is micro trenching, which right now is not something the city of Flagstaff does much of. You have your standard trenching, which is, you know, a mini X or an excavator, just digging your trench. You have a boring, which is, if you guys are familiar with it, is directional drilling, so you're actually just drilling underneath the ground. And then, you have rock sawing, which is, in extreme cases, is you're actually very similar to micro trenching, but you're just sawing into the earth because of whatever kind of terrain you ran into. The disturbance, so we break everything up into small zones, and we do that because we want to be able to complete a zone and have it fully operational quickly. So, we don't want to have a big build area where it says we, if we had to bore underneath an intersection, and we had to create pits on both sides and shut down traffic. We want to shut down traffic for 30 minutes, not for a long period of time or have a lane closure or something of that nature. So, everything's designed in very small zones or sections so that we can complete them very quickly. We permit in a method that allows us also to do that. So, when we design it and we ask for permits, it's all done in a very similar method. Then, our method of construction, of course, partially is what the city approves when we send it to planning and zoning and permitting, but also is something that we do that creates the least amount of disturbance. So, example, if we look at micro trenching, micro trenching is extremely fast and creates almost no dust and very little disturbance. An actual dug trench can create an issue where you can't get traffic across it. So, but it all depends on what's necessary at that location, what kind of terrain we're dealing with, and so forth. But, 80% of Flagstaff is underground, which means that, you know, it'll be an interduct, which is just similar to a conduit, that is buried underground, that is never to seen again besides anywhere that there's a manhole that the fiber has to come into to be spliced or so forth.
And do you guys do any environmental restoration if there is disturbance in the area?
Yeah. And so, in every, everything we go through, you know, so if you look at, like, the Wallapie Tribe, you know, we're doing tribal land, so we have to get the Wallapie Tribe's approval, BIA approval, where we have to go through SHPO. There are some BLM and state land. And so, in those cases, it's a very thorough process, and yes, any restoration, whether it be dirt, asphalt, or anything else, we always have to do and leave everything the way that we found it. So, when we're done, it has to be restored exactly how we found it at the end of the day. I don't know if that answers your questions, but, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris has a question.
No, you're fine. I actually didn't get to work out totally this morning, so I need it.
So, so, so when you're, when you're looking at coming into a city to lay your fiber, do you also look at what's being built already so that you can work alongside? So, say like if it's a new subdivision that's going in, and they're going in the same direction that you need to go. So, do you look at the building permits that's been pulled so that you can work alongside them?
100%. We, we always, although the state of Arizona doesn't technically have a dig-ones policy, we try to do that ourselves because it, one, it saves a lot of money and a lot of disturbance, and it decreases the amount of time to build and get the service to the residents. So, if you look at, for example, Mojave County, we have a great relationship with a builder called Engel Homes. So, every neighborhood that they build, we have a program with them, we put our conduit in the ground while they're digging their streets and doing everything. We work at the cities and towns to be able to overlay our project map and what we've designed with any future conduit they might be putting in, new water lines they're doing. The same thing with the power companies. We work with all of them to try to make sure that we disturb the least amount of land possible, and we can be more efficient and cut down costs. During the planning with the city, we did the same thing. They have some, you guys have some future areas you'll be building and digging up the dirt, and so it makes sense that we partner together, and let's go through these areas to save time, to save, you know, costs, and be able to get the product brought to the residents as soon as possible. So, we do that from top to bottom.
Okay, so then I'm going to ask another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Because the, the company or the organization that's digging up this, putting in streets or whatever, they're, they're putting in that infrastructure, so do you contribute to that cost?
And with, I guess I'm not following the question entirely, so.
Okay, let me, let me try.
Okay.
So, if a, if a developer is coming in and they're building, you know, a group of homes, oftentimes, they're, you know, having to have to put in sewer lines or water lines or whatever it is that they have to, to put in, and they have to, you know, pay to put those things in. So, you're coming alongside them and putting in your fiber or whatever. Do you, do you pay for any of that infrastructure cost?
Correct. So, what we pay for normally, we, we pay for our duct, our fiber, our electronics and everything else, and then there'll be a portion of the trenching fee that we generally pay for. So, if you look at a normal neighborhood build, depending on that area, you know, they might do one really large trench that's like, say, eight feet deep. Let's, these numbers won't be correct for Flagstaff, but they might do water at eight feet, you know, electrical at four feet, and, you know, telecommunications at three feet. So, that big trench they built, that cost will be split, and we'll be paying part of those costs, yes.
Please don't sit down. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry to make you turn around and all of that, so.
Oh, no. I love it. I can do this all day.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and as I was reading up on WECOM and trying to understand the work that you do, one of the quotes from, from your organization that stood out to me was stating that you are seeking to reach every single underserved and unserved and underserved homeschool police department and business in some of the areas that you were working with. Specifically, that was in regards to Pinale County and Superior. So, I'm wondering if the work that you're planning to do in Flagstaff is looking to reach our underserved and unserved communities, in particularly partnership with our different school bodies from Flagstaff Unified School District, Coconino Community College, NAU. Obviously, they already have some structure built in, and your services are mapped out to reach all of Flagstaff, but I'm just wondering what sort of specific focus you have there in terms of reaching out to the underserved within our Flagstaff community?
Yeah, so that's a great question, and the answer is yes. So, the program that we have, the city of Flagstaff is a project that we're funding, and in a lot of Flagstaff, there is service, but we want to enhance that service and deliver something better. And then, there's also the un- and underserved program that we have, and that is part of our Coconino County and Flagstaff build, in which our goal is to hit every un- and underserved household in all of Coconino County, and that includes every single city. The only thing, the Navajo Nation is technically its own project. So, when you look at how the BEAD program and un-underserved was set up, the project areas were all separated. So, the Navajo Nation is a project, Coconino County is a project, and within Coconino County, including Flagstaff, we have, we won that RFP with Coconino County. The goal is every un- and underserved household in the entire county, including Flagstaff, will be served. That is the goal, and that is accurate.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, are there any more questions? All right.
That's what I would do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So, next steps. So, we're coming to council. This is, this is the design portion of the design-build contract, and technically, the dollar amount is less than what we typically come to council, but we knew this was a big project. It's got a lot of things coming up, and some of those amendments to this project will definitely exceed that amount. So, we wanted to come to you and kind of get this in front of you. There are several next steps. WECOM's working on finishing their design. We've got a bunch of amendments and approvals that we need council to consider, the design-and-build contract when we actually start construction, license for the public use of our right-of-way, leasing our excess conduit to WECOM in exchange for them building elsewhere, maintenance agreements, in-kind financial exchanges. We're also considering whether we want to do code amendments, you know, with some of the newer construction methodologies, if that works for our community or not. So, we're having staff discussions about that. So, all of those things we expect to see over the next several weeks, so this was just kind of the first part of it, wanted to get in front of you, get some excitement around it, and we're excited for WECOM to start building construction. So, my next slide is questions, but it seems like you guys have already asked all of them, which I appreciate, but is there any other questions for me or for Paul?
Any additional questions? Councilmember Matthews.
CJ, can you go back a slide? Please, thank you. So, you mentioned in a couple of weeks, this would be done, or?
We are, we are working on it feverishly, so I can't give you a specific date, but we are, we're working to get this as quickly as possible.
So, we've got licenses and leases and maintenance agreements, and you know how I felt about the speed of government, so I was just confused when I heard you say, "In a couple of weeks," and then I'm seeing this list. So, I just wanted to confirm that that's something that is realistic by the end of the year?
Yeah, so a lot of these are actually, we've, we've already got drafts, and we've been having our legal counsel and their legal counsel go back and forth and doing redlines. Again, I can't give you a very specific, you know, the speed of government is the speed of government, so we're working our best. So, my hope is to get this as quickly as possible, and I know WECOM's excited to get started on construction as well, so we will work as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions or comments? Besides, I know that we're in good hands with, with you all. So, how about a motion to award the design-build services contract to WECOM and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents?
Mayor, I'll move to approve a contract with WECOM and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Moving down to item 8B, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2024-21.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Sterling Solomon, your city attorney. I'll try and be a little more brief than CJ. Just kidding, CJ. It was very good, very excited about that. This is actually a property acquisition ordinance under the charter that's required. The reason I'm presenting rather than Bryce or somebody from Water Services, it involves water line easement and a hydrant, but it's from BNSF, and it was not easily obtained. BNSF did work with us, however, and I've basically put that ordinance together for you here. All you have to do tonight is do the first reading and then the second read at the next regular council meeting. I will note that this one is a little bit different from the perspective of the location of the water line and the actual hydrant. Obviously, the hydrant is visible, but some things are allowed to be kept confidential, and we believe there's a law covering that here. So, that's one of the reasons you don't see it attached to the item, though it would be in the records. It would, it's just not an open public record.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have questions? Yeah, that was kind of presumptuous of you to sit down.
Here I stand.
All right. No questions, no comments. So I will entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only for the first time.
Mayor, I move that we read ordinance number 2024-21 by title only for the first time.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff accepting and approving an easement agreement with BNSF, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you.
Permission to be seated?
Yes. So now we are moving down to C, consideration and... Sorry, there's all kinds of stuff going on. Consideration and possible action use of the council initiative fund. Councilmember Harris, would you like to lead the beginning of this discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I brought this to the mayor's attention while we were on break, but I think she had already heard about it. Several people had already contacted her about it. Laura Kinsey Elementary School, which is located in the south side off on Longtree, lost their 21st Century funding for their after-school program. I don't have all the details in terms of why that happened, and it happened so late in the summer, so they didn't have an opportunity to try and figure out what they were gonna do. And I found out about it from the Boys and Girls Club because they used the Murdoch Center for their summer teen camp, and at that time, Mark was telling us that he was trying to figure out what to do and how to help. And so the Boys and Girls Club stepped up and decided that they were gonna go out and try and find... The total amount is $120,000, and no, I'm not asking us for $120,000, but to find the $80,000, he could run that after-school program for that amount. And so we proceeded to contact different organizations and people in Flagstaff and in our community, because these are our kids, these are our community members. This not only affects the children, but it also affects their parents, because now they have to find alternative childcare for that after-school while they're still at work. It also affects businesses, because now perhaps maybe they can't, they're gonna be missing work, because they've got to figure something else out for the kids. So it really does affect our whole community. And so I'm asking the council if they can, if we can look at our funds, our special funds, I can't remember the name of it, but, and see what we can contribute to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did have a conversation with the superintendent, and he said that their evaluation from the state of the program last year was they had no findings, no, no anything. And so they were shocked to receive this notice in late August, mid-August, that this after-school funding wasn't going to be available. And this is funding for low-income families so that their children can be in after-school programs at no cost to them, and that's why the Boys and Girls Club is scrambling, trying to find the funding to continue to provide those services for the kids. And I want to say that it's, I think Mark told me it was 134 families that this impacts, so... And I don't know the number of children attached to those families. Councilmember Matthews.
Yes. Councilmember Harris, did I understand you that you've raised, or they've raised some of the money?
Yes. The last I talked to Mark, he had raised some of the money. He's got commitments, but not money in hand, and so we're still looking to raise the additional funds that he doesn't have. So I can't give you the exact number, and I didn't ask Mark to be here tonight, so sorry.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Harris, for bringing this forward. I've been following some of Mr. Cox's posts about this and the desire to raise the funding. I believe what he last listed was that they're needing to raise between $60,000 to $80,000 remaining of the need, but don't quote me on that. That's not necessarily exact or the most recent accurate number, but I would love to see us contribute some of our fund to this, and I am hoping that there are exact numbers that we're considering for this. I believe we have $25,000 total for this fund. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. City Manager?
I believe so also. I think this is the first expenditure out of this fund, and we call this the council initiative fund for this fiscal year, I believe.
Okay, thank you. So, and obviously, I'm not suggesting that we do all of it to this, and I actually have another item that I'd like to suggest that council consider, but I would love to see us be able to give something substantially that shows our commitment to this program and to the families that are impacted by it. And I do think it's also really important to remember what Councilmember Harris said about the broader implications. It may be, and I say this in quotes, only, quote-unquote, 100 or 135 families, but it impacts all of the children of those families. It impacts the schools, it impacts our businesses, it impacts our whole broader community. So I am, again, very grateful for this being brought forward and would love to hear some numbers. I know Councilmember Harris said that she didn't necessarily have a number in mind, but I am open to suggestions or recommendations.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember House and Harris. Just a couple popcorn thoughts here. I'm very open to supporting this cause. I think it's right up our alley, and I'm pleased to be in a position to be able to offer some support for this. This is the first time, as the city manager said, that we've broached the subject of the council initiative fund this fiscal year. It's pretty early in the year, so we have an entire year ahead of us of perhaps making decisions and having opportunities come across our space to look at these fundings. I would be very reluctant to go too deep into our pocket here right at the outset, just because of all the unknowns that naturally occur with 11 months left in the fiscal year. I'm also, I've said this before, I see this fund as one-time monies for things that we're supportive of and want to contribute to, and to show, you know, to showcase. I would not be inclined to intimate or discuss this being more than a one-time help-out for this group. We're gonna need these funds each year for different things in perpetuity, and we can't lock up these funds with multiple-year commitments. So I just wanted to state that for myself, for my own opinion on that matter right off the bat. And then also, this is a good time to bring up some of the things that we've already discussed, you know, in addition to what's coming up today, that we've already intimated that we'd like to spend the money on, conversation that we did very publicly and in front of the group. So the Coconuts, I remember, I think we weren't able to fund them last year, but we discussed being able to set some money aside for their needs this year, and there was another group that was involved with Coconuts. I'm not remembering the name of the group, but I know there was two of them. I wanted to keep that on our radar and in front of our minds. And again, just thinking throughout the whole 12 months of the year, there's a lot that could come before us later that we want to take advantage of as well.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. When I read the packet, there were some numbers, and I don't remember what they were, about the maximum under our guidelines that we give to one organization. And consistent with that, I'm very supportive of this idea as a one-time expenditure. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews, and then Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So the issues with childcare and after-school programs is really plaguing, we heard it down at the league, our whole state. I may get in trouble for asking this up here, but we're very supportive of our unhoused programs through budgetary process, not this small $25,000. Is there any opportunity, I know this would not be an immediate solution, but would it be appropriate, as we enter into the budgetary conversations, to give a little bit more of a robust support? Because these are our children in our community, and they are in our most needed families to need support. And I know that a lot of parents can't go to work when they don't have childcare, and I don't want us to just focus on one area of superneed, which is our unhoused. They need a lot of help, and we've been very generous, but this after-school program, for me, is equally significant and important, so...
And just as a reminder, we do annually give to the United Way in the city's budget as well as the after-school program fax, correct? City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. That is correct, and thank you, Councilmember Matthews, for your comment and question. We do contribute to a number of entities that I think could fall into this realm of child education or childcare, after-school, before-school, well, not before-school, but certainly in the early childhood education category. Ironically, we have a meeting set up here coming up soon with the Elevate Pre-K. Council may remember, this is one of the programs that was funded with the initiative last year. I say last year because it was last fiscal year. It was really earlier this summer that that occurred. So I think your conversation tonight is consistent with other conversations that have occurred. Also, just to refresh, we are a contributor to other programs, Tinkertopia, we have provided the facility for their operation, STEM operation for youth, young adults. Similar comment with the Boys and Girls Club. So we do these city contributions in various ways. Sometimes it's a financial contribution, sometimes it's through other means, and then, as you mentioned, Mayor, certainly through United Way, and United Way is a big supporter of the programs that we're talking about, Elevate Pre-K, Kinder Camp, Tinkertopia, so Summarizing the comments from tonight, we can queue this up for more council discussion, come back with some suggested possible strategies for funding. I want to mention, you know, there have been times during the fiscal year where things come up, and they may not fall neatly within the council initiative or other funding sources, but it doesn't mean that they don't become addressed or considered or entertained in some fashion. Funding happens sometimes mid-year. We have seen that through federal programs. We've taken advantage of that and have seen monies go out into the community through supplemental budget appropriations. So there are possibilities. Don't want to get ahead of the discussion, but we, if we're hearing from council, and we know we are, that there's a priority for early childhood education and after-school programming, like the one we're talking about, we're hearing that loud and clear, and it's not a surprise to be hearing your support for this at this time. One last comment I'll share is, you know, with this council initiative, in the first two or three years since its inception, we did not have discussions like this at the dais. Typically, they occurred last minute, at the end of the budget calendar year, and that would always create a little bit of angst, you know, and sometimes a kerfuffle, if you will, but we got through it and managed to get these things funded. It is much more desirable to have these discussions now, even though it's early in the year. It's exactly what this fund was intended to do, and so I'm grateful that we are having this discussion at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris, and then Councilmember House.
I'm pretty familiar with the 21st Century program. It's been around for a while, and we've had it at Laura Kinsey Elementary School for quite a few years. And as the mayor said, it was nothing that the school did that their funding was pooled. I would like to know why, and that's a topic for another discussion. But what I do want to say is that, you know, the Boys and Girls Club, Mark stepped up to the plate. He saw a need, and he decided that he needed to do something about it. And he came into my office, and he asked me if I could help reach out to the community. And I said, absolutely, I could do that, because these are our kids, these are our families. If mom and dad doesn't work, they lose their housing, they're on the streets, so we get homeless, you know, unsheltered people again. So this is not just, and I'm not asking us for $80,000, but I am asking us to think critically about how this affects all of our community. And of course, it is not something that they're gonna come to us every year and ask for. We all understand that these are one-time funds, and that it's to address an immediate need and not something that they're gonna use to fund their program for forever. And so I just kind of wanted that to be clear, and that whatever it is we can do as a city, whatever we can do as a council, we need to do that, and we need to make sure that these kids, because if they're not at school, in supervised, they're at home, unsupervised, all kinds of things happen when those kinds of situations are around, or that kids are in those kind of situations. So bottom line is that whatever it is, council, we can do, let's do it, and let's worry about what comes, you know, what might come up later in the year. Right now, we know that this is an immediate need, but we don't know that there's gonna be another emergency that comes up. This is an emergency.
Councilmember House.
I think Councilmember Harris may have just answered my question, which was just in terms of how eminent or immediate this need was. Do we know when they need funding by to maintain this program, or is Boys and Girls Club planning to run it and be seeking the funding as they're going through? I'm not sure if that's something that you have information on now, or if we can maybe just reach out and try and get that from Mark.
It was my understanding that he is just scrambling right now to get the money so that the youth in the program don't notice the difference, and they just still have the after-school. So I think it's a very pressing timeframe.
And just one more question then, Mayor. I'm just trying to remember, do we know how much we dedicated to the Planet Exhibition at Lowell?
That was 10.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. City manager, I'm inclined to make a motion to approve some money tonight. Would you like to talk me out of that? You want to bring it back?
No, that's what I, no. I'm hoping that we can decide tonight as well. And I would like to hear from the other council members who wanted to talk about initiative funding for other projects as well. If, all right.
Uh, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry. I don't know if you were wanting us to bring that up now, or if that can, I can wait to bring my item up after Councilmember McCarthy's motion.
Now, I think I'd like to talk about all of the projects first, and then talk about how much for each. Vice Mayor.
Just a quick question. Councilmember McCarthy, you mentioned a maximum allotment for any, for any ask. I'm not seeing that written down anywhere. I'm wondering what that meant.
My memory may be incorrect, but I thought I read that when I read the packet, that there was, maybe I'll ask the city manager, what's the full pocket, the full amount that's available? Twenty-five thousand? Twenty-five thousand, is that the total for?
That's correct.
So if we did 25,000 for this, we would have nothing left for anything else. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, at least I understand. Thank you.
Well, I mentioned the Coconuts and the other group that came to present before council very early in the summer. We had a public conversation about lending them some support from this fund. I just want to keep that in mind, and I'm curious to hear what Councilmember House has at this time.
Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to offer my support for deciding on some funding tonight. Thank you, Councilmember Harris, for bringing this up. I also am a little concerned that I haven't had time to really think about what I want for this fund either. I don't want to spend all of it tonight. I'm glad to have this conversation. I think it's very important, and we are on a timeline for what Harris has brought up, and I understand that. But I just, I don't want to fully commit all of the funding tonight, if that's at all possible.
All right. Vice Mayor, did you have anything additional that you wanted to talk about in terms of Coconuts?
No, I just wanted to honor that conversation that occurred very early in the summer and make sure it's on the table.
Okay.
And I don't think we settled on a dollar figure for that country, for that support either.
And then Council-
And I don't think it needs to be much, and it's certainly not urgent.
Councilmember House, did you have a project that you wanted to talk about?
I did. Thank you, Mayor. So the item that I was going to bring forward was the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention is hosting their Out of the Darkness Community Walk again this October. And I have not seen, and again, don't quote me on this, because I don't have full records on this, but I don't know if the city has directly sponsored this event before, but I would love to see council support this this year. This is a topic and a community concern that's very close to my heart. And I just got information on sponsorship opportunities. They range from $1,000 upwards of, I think the highest might be $1,205. I would be looking more in the $1,000 to $5,000 range. I'll share that I am personally seeking to raise $1,000 this year, and will be sharing that information out soon on my, on my personal pages. But I would love to see council support this as well. There are quote-unquote "marketing benefits" to, to supporting this that have some timelines on it, but I'm not particularly interested in, in those outside of showing that this organization and this cause has council support. I am willing to be flexible in the number ask that, that I would give based on the recommendation from Councilmember McCarthy regarding the school, because I do think that that is a larger ask, and certainly a more criti, or, I don't want to say a more critical need, but their need is more eminent, more emergent than, than this one is. There is certainly time to raise donations and support for the Community Walk. That, that does not necessarily exist for this other program. So I can, I'll just share again that my hope is that we could donate between $1,000 to $5,000 to this cause. I am happy to just propose the $1,000. That would be a prevention sponsorship. The other options would be 2,500 for an advocate, or $5,000 for a support sponsor. But out of consideration for the Kinsey program, I would be willing to stick with the $1,000 range, so that we can consider a greater donation to the school program.
Can you remind us when that walk is?
It is October 5th.
Vice Mayor. Oh, Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you for all that information, Councilmember House. I just realized that we have CJ Perry in the building, and I know he's associated with one of those groups. Maybe you could remind us a little bit about that discussion, I think it was in May, and maybe share with us what level of support would be helpful for your, your team and the Coconuts team.
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councils, I apologize, I was out in the hall for a little bit, so I missed some of the discussion, but I will do my best. If we're talking about funding for kind of robotics programs, I would say there's some of the biggest help, this is coming from my perspective. I'm not directly related with the Coconuts, so we're, I help coach the Flagstaff Christian School Team, but we're starting a new team at the higher level. There's basically three levels of robotics. There's the LEGO level, there's what's called FTC, which is smaller robots, but still made out of aluminum and plastic parts and all of that stuff. And then there's FRC, which is what the Coconuts are. The Coconuts have really worked to spread the word about both the LEGO and the FTC teams. And I know in our case of trying to start an FTC team, since we've only had the LEGO ones so far, grant funds to help get some of the robots. There's a lot of funding needs to kind of get started, and the Coconuts have really helped support starting up new teams. And so from that perspective, just from, from my personal opinion, being a coach of one of the smaller ones, having access to grant funds, just to kind of get the initial materials to get the programs off the ground is super helpful. There are kits for FTC that start at about $750 per kit, so to start a team, you kind of need to start with that kit, and then you can kind of grow it from there. At the FLL level, the LEGO level, they're about $500 to $600 for a, what's called a Spike Prime kit through LEGO. So that's about the costing to start a new team. So there, I see a lot of benefits there. As far as the Coconut-specific needs, I would have to defer to them. I couldn't really speak on their behalf.
Sure, thank you. Well, that's very helpful. It kind of allows me to wrap my mind around what support might look like, maybe sponsoring a kit at, between the $500 and $1,000 level, either simply for one of these groups, or for Coconuts itself separately, I don't know. I would just note that these are after-school programs as well, and they provide a great deal of structured activity and mentorship for our school kids associated with the school district, all the same, yeah.
Absolutely. Anything else for me?
Thank you, CJ.
Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in support of coming up with a number tonight, but I'd also like some more information, either make availability with Mark at Boys and Girls Club for us to ask questions, or have him come present. When does the current money run out? Is it already out? What other opportunities do we have? What can United Way do? Are they contributing? There's a lot of unknowns and a lot of opportunities, I think, that might be out there if we had more information. So I do support giving some of our, our money, our initiative funding tonight, but it's, you know, even if we gave the full amount, it's, it's not going to solve the problem. So I'd like to give something to show our commitment and that we support it, but I'd like to dive deeper into the conversation and really find out what opportunities, what solutions, you know, where, when the timeline is, and, and things like that.
Yeah, and that would give him an opportunity to also talk to the public about what's going on there. Now, I spoke to him several weeks ago, and at that point, he had about $30,000 promised, and I'm guessing it's more than that now. But, but baseline, they were needing 60,000 to 80,000, and the money's already, the money was spent last school year, so there's nothing for the program at this point, is my understanding. And please, Councilmember Harris, if I am remembering incorrectly. So I would propose that we make a decision about the Out of the Darkness Walk and the after-school program tonight, and then come back to this discussion about the robotics at a later meeting, since, since these are both very time-sensitive. And Councilmember Harris, do you have a dollar figure that you were wanting to propose?
Eighty thousand, but I won't do that. I'm sorry. Just a little levity, you know, because this, this is a little serious, you know, and we, and I can get kind of, you know, passionate about other people's children. So I would say between 5,000 and 10,000 would be what I would suggest.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember McCarthy, what were you thinking?
Oh, I wrote in my notes here, 12,000. I was going to make a motion, but if you want to talk about it before I move, let me know.
All right. Any additional thoughts? Well, I want to see whether people have additional thoughts for different amounts.
When we started talking about this, I was leaning more towards between 5,000 and 10, so maybe we split it down the middle and do 7,500?
Seventy-five hundred? I feel like I'm on a game show. Councilmember House?
I was going to suggest something similar. I was going to suggest, uh, sorry, my brain's a little fuzzy right now, but my, my mind initially was leaning towards 10. With Councilmember Harris saying 5,000 to 10, I would be comfortable with, I was going to suggest 8, as kind of splitting the difference between her low and Councilmember McCarthy's high.
Vice Mayor.
I was thinking, the magic number in my head was 10 as well, but I would be willing to go down a little bit, maybe to 8. It seems like a nice compromise. And, and the reason is, is I, I think that this is a problem that requires a much more systemic solution, and it requires the city of Flagstaff to be able to look in its couch cushions and find ways to support this this year and ongoing. I trust that we will have some success doing that down the road. Whether we give 8 or 10, I don't think it's going to make the difference for the Boys and Girls Club and for these after-school programs in Kinsey. I think, I think the contribution itself will matter, because it is urgent, and it, it helps build momentum, it helps Mark raise more money. So I'm very supportive of that. In the, in the mid to long term, though, I think, I think there's obviously a bigger conversation we need to have about after-school programming and getting to the bottom of what happened in this instance. And so knowing that that conversation is forthcoming, I would be supportive of somewhere between 7,500 and 8,000, also because I know that these funds, we're going to find other ways to use them later in the year as well.
All right, we're 7,500, 8,000. Councilmember Matthews?
Quick question before I give you my number. Come on down, Price is Right. Do we know the monthly cost for these programs? So I'm good with 8. If, with the condition that we are going to continue this conversation to get more information, understand the long-term needs, and what, who else can come to the table and stuff, but for right now, to give some relief and some feeling that they're getting some support out there, maybe start the momentum, let's do 8.
Councilmember McCarthy? Mine's working.
Hello, hello?
Mine is working.
Hello?
Well, first of all, thank you, Miranda. I was thinking of 12. So I move that we take $8,000 from the council initiative fund and allocate it to the Kinsey Elementary After-School Program. Thank you, Miranda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Hi? Aye?
Aye. Now it works.
Okay, and then next is the Out of the Darkness Walk, and so we have, originally, Councilmember House discussed 1,000 to 5,000. 2,500 was also put out there. Councilmember House, do you want to add anything?
Uh, no, except since we came down from what I thought the original ask for the Kinsey program was, I'm going to make a push for the 2,500 advocate sponsor for the walk. But I will let someone else make a motion after council has some discussion on that.
Council, what do you think? Is there anyone who feels that that number is not appropriate and wants to speak up now? Then is there anyone who would make a motion for 2,500 for the Out of the Darkness Walk, for the, the American Association of Suicide Prevention?
I'll move the 2,500 to go to the Out of the Dark Suicide Prevention Walk.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then we'll come back for another discussion about robotics, and at some point, also a larger discussion about after-school programs. So, moving down, we have open call to the public, and we don't have anything online. We have two in person. First up is Scott Warren.
Yes, thank you, folks. My name is Scott Warren, this right here. And I run a small computer business in Flagstaff called Flagstaff Computers, but what I want to talk about is the situation at the homeless shelter, Flagstaff Shelter Services. Due to a tragic event in my life about six years ago, I got depressed, became homeless for quite a while, and I spent six months at the Flagstaff Shelter Services, where I witnessed violent men getting away with theft, rape, and beating people up. I talked to the people, the staff at the shelter, and they told me their charter says that they have to accept everyone, no matter what. they have to accept everyone, no matter what, known criminals as well. So I would like to try to figure out a way, perhaps we could have some volunteer security, people doing actual private security for the people out on the streets there, or just try to find some solution to make it a safer place. And anyway, I'm passionate about homelessness and especially the women I see that are abused and whatnot, and it just breaks my heart. And it's a complex problem, but in any event, I'd just like to call out for ideas or thinking about how could we possibly make that part of town in Flagstaff safer than it is now. I got a lot more to say, but I, I guess that's about it right now. And I really do thank you guys for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. All right, next we have Stephen Young.
I'm here to say, since everybody's passing along all this money, I'm speaking to Sterling Solomon personally about the condemnation of 116 East Butler, where your city police officers was very active in disposing of property. Mr. Sterling here and his staff threw a case from Superior Court recently, where his judge said, "Put me out of courtroom, no due process." I'm here to, to get just compensation from the city attorney and ask Mr. Sterling, why come the people's responsible for the disposal of my property is either getting promoted or not prosecuted at all? Now, I done done four false arrests. We need to maybe come compensation on that as well. Now I see the city council know all about that and don't care, because every time I leave your building, I get arrested. They're re, they're, they're making up charges, okay? Mr. Sterling is a failure to prosecute. Your city ordinance caused me 116 East Butler, which the City of Flagstaff has not came up and said for public use. I've had a trailer there since 2014. The city police department with Sterling's legal team advisors is allowing the neighbors to tear down the, the encroachment fence. I'm letting you know now, I'm going back over there today, and the city police department needs to stay away from my property. Or the City of Flagstaff need to come with a combination check to show proof of the residence. Now, I am county recorded for 116 East Butler. Your police chief just walked in here, he gave me the hairy eyebrow. They be following me around town, and by no means in my mental. I'm saying, and I'm asking, due to city council, are, are you aware of the constitutional right violations of, of me and my brother? And would you like documentation to verify that there is a conspiracy among the judicial system, Sterling, Mr. Solomon there, and the county attorney? We need to address the false arrest. And since you throwing out money today, we need relocation funding, me and my brother and I, from the disposal of property from the wrong address. Your city police department did that. They're on film, throwing our shit in, in two trash trucks. We need relocation money. We need to talk about compensation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, 10-07 Parking, Loading, Access, and Private Street Requirements. This is a city code, and we want that observed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving down to item number 10, informational items, two from mayor, council, and staff, and future agenda item requests. I'll start on this end tonight. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one thing. I just wanted to mention something that I forgot to bring up last week. I went down to a really great one-day conference that was put on by the United States Conference of Mayors, and Mayor Cory Woods in Tempe on public-private partnerships. I was joined, surprisingly, surprisingly, because we didn't contact each other with David McIntyre from our community investment director. It was very informative, very helpful, and it just helps educate us on our opportunities moving forward. So I was appreciative of the invite, and it was well worth the attendance.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris? Vice Mayor? Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you. We've gotten a lot of questions recently about development in Pine Canyon, and I was just wondering if maybe the staff would be willing to give us a kind of a, a brief discussion about what's going on. And I'm not talking about the little things that, like we approved tonight, but the big changes in Pine Canyon expansion, impact on wildlife corridors and things like that. So would that be an appropriate thing to ask the staff to kind of give us a, a brief overview on? Because I'm not really up to speed on what's going on out there. Do you want to think about that and get back to me?
Shall I respond, Mayor?
Certainly.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. As I was listening to you pose that question, it seems like maybe an update to council regarding the John Wesley Powell corridor would be quite relevant to your question.
It kind of ties in, but that's not my specific question. But anyway, I'm more interested in the real estate development out there, and it's probably good, but I would just like to know a little more about what's going on so that I can talk intelligently about it to people. So.
Yes, we could queue that up for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
One other thing, the man that just walked out had some complaints. I don't know if they're legitimate or not. I'd be interested in hearing from staff, staff's perspective on what's going on. Thank you.
Councilmember Sweet?
I have just a couple of things. I did go to the tourism conference, and Arizona has a new logo. Very exciting. This week, I have a workforce housing meeting. I'm attending the recovery court tomorrow, and Mobile Haven has a meeting Thursday evening at the Ramada, six o'clock. And thank you to staff who has said they would be there. And Art Walk is Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things from me today. I was able to attend the third-quarter Coconado County Crisis System meeting. Great wealth of resources available to our community. Thank you to the folks that were part of that and presenting from independent agencies to the fire and police departments and so forth. I would also like to remind council and the community that September is National Suicide Prevention Month. This year's hashtag and slogan is Be the One To, and that's encouraging folks to be the one to, whether it's follow-up, be the one to ask, be the one to keep people safe, be the one to be there, or be the one to help people to connect with the resources that they need. So more on that upcoming throughout this month, but just wanted to share that with folks now.
Thank you. All right. Last week, I presented, or I sat on a panel, the Center for the Future of Arizona, which started off the League of Arizona Cities and Towns. And we were talking about, they just released an Arizona Voters Agenda, polling Arizona voters and finding where we have agreement. So we were talking about that. And then on Wednesday, the Deputy Secretary for the Department of Energy, David Turk, was in town. He had been touring, he toured a home on the Navajo Nation that had just been electrified, and Navajo Home Project, I should have written it down before I started talking. They are installing solar across the Navajo Nation, and I've read different statistics. It was between thirteen thousand and fifteen thousand homes are without power on the reservation. So this is a big deal. And the Department of Energy has awarded an additional five million dollars to continue electrifying homes. And our Director of Sustainability, Nicole Antonopoulos, was there with me, as was Sean Johnson, Chief of Staff, and we got to briefly meet the Deputy Secretary and briefly say Flagstaff is all over this stuff, and we'll be coming to see him. So that is all that I wanted to say. City Manager?
Nothing from me. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. With that, we are adjourned.